To say welcome and congratulations to our new board for the upcoming two years. Congratulations to each and every one of you. We are going to, by the board bylaws, elect tonight the Chair and Secretary. That is on the agenda later on, so I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules to move that up, so that we can get that order of business done first, if that is at all possible.
I will suspend the rules to move an item on the agenda.
Okay. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, so we will move item E1 under New Business, so that will be the first item that we will talk about tonight. So the first nomination will be the office of Chairperson. And according to the bylaws, the function of the Chairperson is a presiding officer of the Board. He shall or she shall preside at all meetings of the Board, in the absence of the Chairperson, the Vice Chairperson shall preside, in the absence of both the Chairperson and the Vice Chairperson, the Secretary shall preside. In the absence of all three officers, and when a quorum has been assembled, Chairperson pro scam shall be chosen. So I will entertain a motion to accept nominations for the position of Chairperson for the Newington Board of Education.
Move the Board of Education, accept nominations for the position of Chairperson.
Any second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, nominations are now open.
I nominate Josh Schulman for Chairperson.
Okay, we have a nomination for...
Second.
Joshua Schulman. We have a second. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to close nominations. All right. Mr. Braverman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, and this is an opportunity for our one candidate to speak.
I would like to say thank you to the other members of the Board. I look forward to working with each of you, and thank you for the support.
All right, so we'll call the roll now, and Debbie will, as she calls your name, I would ask that you articulate the person, so Joshua C. Schulman, by name, okay? If that's who you choose to vote for. Okay?
Michael Branda.
Joshua Schulman.
Sharon Braverman.
Josh Schulman.
Danielle Dross.
Josh Schulman.
Emily Guyan.
Josh Schulman.
Josh Schulman.
Joshua C. Schulman.
Steven Sylvia.
Say Joshua C.
Joshua Schulman.
Cindy Stan.
Joshua C. Schulman.
Robert Telfell.
Joshua C. Schulman.
Bob Sella.
Joshua C. Schulman.
Let the record indicate that Joshua C. Schulman has been elected Chairperson of the Newington Board of Education. Congratulations. Second nomination this evening, it will be for the office of Secretary. In accordance with the bylaws of the Board of Education, the function of the Secretary is as follows: Secretary shall be responsible for all records of Board meetings; minutes of the Board meeting shall be furnished to each Board member before final approval for the record. I'll entertain a motion to accept nominations for the position of Secretary.
Move the Board of Education, accept nominations for the position of Secretary.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Vasella, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nominations are now open.
I nominate Dr. Sharon Braverman for Secretary.
I second the nomination.
All right, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
This is an opportunity for Dr. Braverman to say a few words.
I'm honored to be nominated for Secretary of the Board. I promise I won't write anything, because none of you could read it if I did, but I can type it off very well. It's, to be in a leadership position on the Board is just one more step in making sure our school system is superb, like it always has been, and I'm proud to be part of that team. Thank you very much.
All right, Debbie will call the roll.
Michael Branda.
Dr. Sharon Braverman.
Sharon Braverman.
Danielle Dross.
Sharon Braverman.
Emily Guyan.
Dr. Sharon Braverman.
Joshua Schulman.
Dr. Sharon Braverman.
Steven Sylvia.
Dr. Braverman.
Cindy Stan.
Dr. Sharon Braverman.
Robert Telfell.
Dr. Sharon Braverman.
Bob Sella.
Dr. Sharon Braverman.
Let the record show, Dr. Sharon Braverman has been elected the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education. Congratulations. At this point, I would ask our new Chair to join me at the head of the table, and the Vice Chair is not elected, the Vice Chair is appointed by the Chair, so that I will, at this point, turn the meeting over to our new Chairperson.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. Again, thank you, everyone. As Dr. Collins said, the Vice Chair is an appointed position. It is one that I was privileged to serve in under Dr. Finkelstein when he was the Chair of the Board. I have selected, and we have all kind of discussed among ourselves, that Emily Guyan is going to be appointed the Vice Chair, and this is a reflection of the work that she's done over the last two years, and, you know, I think that it's someone that we all can work with, and it's just another person that everyone can work with, and we're all going to work great together as a group, and Emily, very happy to have you as the Vice Chair, if you'd like to say anything.
I always like to say something. This is a great privilege, I am honored to serve in this role, and I am very much looking forward to these next two years, and taking on a new position on the Board, and just continuing our work here to make sure our schools continue to be the best they can be, so, thank you.
Fantastic. We do need to move one additional action item, so that we can do our presentation tonight. So I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules one more time to move Action Item 2 to the top of the agenda, so that we can then do our resolution honoring our workers for tonight.
It's today.
So if we can have a motion to suspend the rules to move an agenda item?
So moved.
Dr. Braverman, in second by Mr. Vasella, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we are now on Action Item 2, which is the resolution honoring custodians and maintenance workers who are in the audience with us tonight, so it's appropriate to get the action item before we present the resolution. If someone would read the recommended motion. Ms. Guyan?
Move the Board of Education, approve the resolution honoring school custodians and maintenance workers, and proclaiming Tuesday, November 14, 2017, as School Custodian and Maintenance Workers' Day.
Is there a second? By Mr. Tuftel, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and we are now back at B on the agenda, which is the presentation of awards and proclamations. We have one presentation this evening, the resolution that we just passed honoring custodial and maintenance workers, and here to accept the award, and I'll ask you all to come up, I think I have most of your names. Dick Vita, the Director of Maintenance Services, Tim Sunderland from John Wallace, Chris Roy, also from John Wallace, Bob Tipton from John Patterson, James Ponte from Newington High School, Christine Razalovich from Martin Kellogg, Dave Godbout from Martin Kellogg, and Adam Pastzak, one of our maintenance workers. Welcome, Mr. Vita, and all of our wonderful staff. We have a resolution honoring Newington School Custodians and Maintenance Workers dated November 14, 2017, whereas Wednesday, November 14, 2017, has been proclaimed Custodian and Maintenance Workers' Day, and whereas the Newington School Custodians and Maintenance Workers thoroughly clean, dust, scrub, refinish, sanitize, repair, paint, and maintain all areas for safety and comfort in all buildings on a daily and nightly basis, and whereas the Newington School Custodians and Maintenance Workers have shown dedication and conscientious performance in carrying out their many tasks to maintain and improve our school buildings, and whereas the Newington School Custodians and Maintenance Workers maintain a close working relationship with school staff, and whereas the Newington School Custodians and Maintenance Workers show a willingness to go above and beyond the workday to keep our school shining at all times. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 14, 2017, as Newington School Custodian Maintenance Workers' Day. Be it resolved that we urge all of the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing gratitude to Newington School Custodians and Maintenance Workers on this very special day. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting, and to provide a suitable copy for presentation. And I will share one anecdote, which is that I was at a meeting of family and community members and parents for one of the ratings of our schools at the high school, and the thing, over and over again, that parents said is that when they walk into the school, they get a good feeling about it, based on how it looks. The kids feel safe, things look good, things smell good, even the places that might not, and it's a good environment, and it starts with you folks and the incredible work that you do. And we all say thank you, and I turn it over to any Board comment before Mr. Vita.
Mr. Vasella?
I just wanted to say congratulations again. I was at Wallace on Monday night for a PTA meeting, and I walked in, and that wet look was there, and the school hasn't changed. You guys do a phenomenal job keeping those schools shiny, and it's great. Thank you very much.
Further Board comment? Ms. Stan?
I have the opportunity of going to many schools in this state, based on what I do as a profession, and above all, and I've said this before, our schools are above any other school that I've ever been in, including the one that I used to work in, and I'm just so proud that my children went here, and when they started going here, and I started going into the schools, I'm like, wow, this is really nice, and you continue to do that on a regular basis, and we clearly, clearly appreciate that. Thank you.
Further, Ms. Guyan?
I want to say, thanks for coming tonight. I don't know how you guys got this meeting, that starts so late, so I appreciate you coming and staying as late as you have, and my anecdote is that when we talk about Anna Reynolds needing to be renovated, people will say, no, I go to Anna Reynolds, and it looks really nice on the inside, and I say, yes, it does, doesn't it? That's because our staff does a really nice job of keeping everything clean and carefully maintained, but there are problems, and there are issues that we need to address, but people don't see it, and it's because of the hard work that you do, so that's my one example for this evening, so thank you for everything that you do.
Ms. Dr. Braverman?
I'd like to thank you for being a familiar face to our students when they come to school every day. It means a lot to parents and friends and neighbors to know that there's somebody their kids know every day, and that's all of you, so thank you.
Any further Board comment? Mr. Tuftel?
For people that don't realize it, this staff cleans approximately 800 houses, equal to 800 houses a week?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight per night.
Per night.
Hundred thousand plus.
Right. And that's...
Per night.
Per night. And it's, they do one heck of a job. We're very, very proud of the work that they do. They still haven't come over and done my kitchen yet.
Or mine.
Seeing no more Board comment, Mr. Vita, I'll turn to you.
I just want to congratulate the Board on their elected positions again, and more importantly, thank you for the support that, you know, you show our staff and the whole school district with. We have a staff of 38 custodians and five maintenance people that really keep our school system, I think, probably the best in the state, and I consider ours to be the best in the state. The amount of work that these people put in every day, the commitment, the dedication, and the loyalty they have to not only the principal of the school, but to the district. I was telling Dr. Collins earlier, we had one of our people midnight on the roof the other night trying to get things squared away. That's commitment. Most people were sleeping, were shoving snow, and doing the things that are important, so that our kids have a facility where they can be environmentally safe, and have a nice learning environment for our teachers and everybody living in the building. So again, thank you for the support that this organization has done over the past years, that I've been here, and to Dr. Collins for the support, and I have a nice boss in Louisville as well, that kind of really supports me. Anything I do from his table, we discuss it, and, you know, he's a guy that is very supportive as well. So, to the staff that's here tonight, and to everybody that's in our school districts working tonight, thank you for the job that you do. You do an outstanding job that allows us to keep our number 30 wet look, and keeps the level of our schools probably the cleanest that I put us against anybody in the state any time. I've always said, get two buildings, put my staff in one building, put another staff in another building, and after eight hours, have judges go in and grade both buildings, and I'll tell you right now, Newington custodial staff and maintenance will knock the socks off anybody. Thank you very much.
And just quickly, for those who don't know, we are a team, and our custodial maintenance staff, our bus drivers, our cafeteria staff, I mean, they're counselors too, I mean, they really connect with the kids, and a lot of times, they are the first line of defense, first person our students see, so thank you, all you guys, you know, you pay a budget.
Thank you. We are on to item C on our agenda, public participation on any matter related to Board responsibilities, and our phones are open at 860-665-8736. Good evening, Ms. Lyons.
Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. I started coming to Board of Education meetings about 25 years ago, when my daughter was in Newington High School. Then I continued coming, because Dr. Finkelstein was the Chairman, and he had me captive as my dentist for a half hour to an hour, talking to me, so I figured I had to have equal time, so I would come to the Board meetings. Since then, I have gone through a few budgets, sat here, listened, and I've learned that your budget matters are way above my pay grade, so I leave that up to the Town Council. The Town Council, I told them I'd be having the Rose Lyons Boot Camp for all new members. I don't think I need to have a boot camp for the Board of Education members, because the Town Council certainly knows how to kick you around when you get down there for your budget presentations, but I want to welcome you all and thank you all for your time and effort that you put into this tremendous task of trying to figure out how and what is going to come first with our school systems. It's not an easy task, I'm sure, and since I don't come to many of the meetings, I've made it a tradition just to come to this first organizational one and say, welcome. You won't be seeing me, but if you do see me walk through the door, it's because I'm upset about something, and I'll have something to say for sure, but seriously, thank you for all you've done and continue to do for the children. And just a side note, with the custodians, back in the 90s, when my daughter was at Martin Kellogg, I was very active with putting on some of the programs with the PTA, PTO, whatever they called themselves back then, and I couldn't have done it without the help of the custodians. Not only do they clean and keep the schools nice, they help out with all the events, and they're the guys to be friends with, because they know where to go to get the stuff that you need, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further public participation? The phones are still on at 860-665-8736. Seeing none, we will move on to old business, of which there is none, and we are back into the new business section, the only item remaining after suspending the rules twice, which is a good intro meeting for Ms. Dross and Mr. Branda to be at, is number three, which is the report on duties responsibilities of members of the Board of Education. As we've all seen in our packets, there's a document listing all of the things we are responsible for with select policies from our policy book, which are all available online. I'd encourage everyone to sift through it. One of the more important things that I think all of us can recommend to our two new members is that the committee structure of the Board is of the utmost importance. Most times when we get around this table, there are action items and resolutions, but in committee stage, we've been doing a lot of the work in research and collaboration that's not necessarily always on TV, where we're really creating the plans for the system, and for any committees that you are or not on, I'd recommend you attend anyway, and for the rest of the Board as well, any committees that you aren't on, those are always open, they're open to the public as well, it's a great learning experience, a good time to collaborate with the rest of the Board, and really understand all the responsibilities as a Board member. I'd ask Dr. Collins if he has anything to add on this report.
The only thing for our new members, the items, if you look, the ones in blue are policy, and the ones in yellow are regulation, so the Board is responsible for developing policy, and then the administration takes that policy and develops regulation to implement that policy. So if you see the color difference, that's why. You may not see that online on the CAPE website, because it's online, but you look for a P or an R, and that should tell you, the regulations tend to be more specific, and that is for the principals and the administration to implement, the Board's will.
Any further comment or discussion from any of the Board members? Seeing none, we will move on to public participation on any matter related to Board responsibilities, Agenda item F. Again, the phone number is 860-665-8736. Good evening, Madam Chairperson.
Hello. Nancy Petronio, 44 Centerwood Road, Newington. Oh, this is so weird. I was leaving, and my 10-year-old son, Jack, said, where are you going, Mom? I said, I'm going to the Board of Ed meeting. He said, but you're done, and I said, oh, I'm just going to go congratulate everybody, and he said, like that? Aren't you going to put on some nicer clothes? But I'm tired, and it's late, so, I just want to say, congratulations, I'm very excited for all of you, the two new members, Danielle and Michael, I think you're going to round out this Board, and it's going to be wonderful. I'm very excited that there's all of you here to kind of finish the work that we've started over the last, you know, 10 years or so here. I know, spending 10 years on the Curriculum Committee, there are a lot of things that we've done, and a lot of things that are, you know, still needed to finish with, you know, class sizes and oral language, and just a bunch of other things, and I know you all know that, so I'm very excited about all the election of every single one of you here. I'm excited, you know, that you're going to be a very cohesive Board, and you're going to get a lot done, and congratulations to Josh, and Sharon, and Emily. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Petronio. Any further public participation? And the phones are open at 860-665-8736, and we have the young lady from Brentwood Road.
Joanne Schulman, 155 Brentwood Road. Congratulations to everyone. I wish you a very successful next couple of years, and good luck with all the work ahead of you, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Mom. Any further public participation? Mr. Hul, welcome.
Lucas Hul, 106 Settle Hill Road. I want to start with my anecdote. The other day, I was sitting in the cafeteria, and I was frigid, I was freezing, I was like, I was so cold, and I flagged down Mr. Fraville. I said, Mr. Fraville, I'm cold. He said, oh, boss, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're going to get the heat on. Next day, I walked into school, heat was on. So, the custodian staff, you know, they do a lot of behind-the-scenes things, but you can always feel free to, you know, go up to them, talk to them, because they know what's going on, they can always fix it. If you have a problem, they can fix it, and if you want to see this and that, they can do it, and I think that's pretty outstanding, and especially, we can have such an active custodian staff behind the scenes, and then come to the pep rally and have your head shaved by me and my student council members, I think that's pretty amazing, so I thank them for that, and in addition, I congratulate every single one of you. You all deserve to be here, and you worked very hard for it, and that in itself speaks along to your commitment to this town, and I'm very excited to see the work that you do, even as I go off to college, I leave, and some may breathe a sigh of relief. I want to come here to pastor sometimes, but I'm just, I'm excited, and I'm glad you're all here, I'm glad you're sitting here, and don't forget, you know, we are students, and, you know, we're here to learn from you, but if you ever want to come and talk to us, you know, my student council door, 313A, is always open, and I'd be glad to discuss anything with any of you, anytime, always, and when I'm not here, my representatives will be, so enjoy that, and best of luck to you guys in these two years.
Thank you, Mr. Hul. Any further public participation? And our phones, once again, 860-665-8736. Seeing none, we will move on to remarks by Board members. We'll start with Dr. Braverman.
Well, welcome to all of us for a new year. I know it's going to be a great Board, once again. All the years that I've been on the Board, parties were never an issue, exactly, well, a little bit, maybe, once, but not too much, and I'm sure that'll be the case this time. We're all in it for the education of our students, and it's going to be a great Board, everyone has talents they're bringing to the table. Mr. Schulman, you'll be a great leader, so, thank you.
Mr. Vasella?
Thank you, yes, I wanted to, first off, thank the community for re-electing me and giving the Board a chance as a whole to really do the best we can for the students in Newington, and I want to echo the Town Council's comments about working together and striving to really do what we can. We've got a big mix of parties, it's a confusing election, and I know the Board has always been, as Dr. Braverman said, a nonpartisan body that tries really hard and supports each other, so here we go for another two years. Thank you, Josh.
Mrs. Stan?
I'd like to congratulate all of us, all of you Board members who are here tonight, and I really do look forward to working with everybody in a collaborative manner, to be really productive and try to move forward in the things that we're going to, our focus is for this school year. I do want to also thank the community for coming out and voting for us, and having their faith in us to continue with this work. I do want to do a shout-out to Lucas, because Lucas was pretty instrumental in helping a lot of us through this campaign, and it was really great to have that support, and I just want to just thank everybody for all the support they've given us out through the whole time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stan. Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. Most of you all know that I generally just speak from the cuff, but tonight, I really wanted to take a moment, and I've got a prepared statement that I'd like to read. First, I want to extend congratulations to all of the members. I mean, on your election to the Board, I'm very comfortable, and especially to our two newest members, Mr. Branda, Danielle, welcome to the team. Elections are over, and we have a leader for this Board, I'm convinced of that. A leader who will establish our strategic direction, a leader who will focus on the results, a leader who will address the facts, a leader who will implement the mission that we've all agreed to. I wanted to publicly pledge my support of Mr. Josh Schulman as our Chairman. Though I continue to champion fiscal conservatism, I'm confident our Chair shall embrace all of our input and fairly consider all dialogue from this Board, as we deliberate the best options for our children's future. Josh is well-prepared, well-suited, and ready to tackle the responsibilities aligned with the role we bestowed upon him. I've said this before, I've typed it also. Our community is fortunate to benefit from his skills. Our Board does have significant tasks before us, and I'm convinced Josh's leadership will be crucial for our success in serving our community. Congratulations, Josh. Congratulations, Josh. You do have my support and please let me know where I may be of service.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia. Mr. Tufel?
First of all, I'd like to congratulate all our fellow board members and to you, Josh, Chairman. Looking forward to outstanding two years and moving forward for the students and our faculty and our voters. So, let's get together and brace all the challenges and do our best to come up with the right ideas and set them forth into practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tufel. Mr. Branda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really quick, I just, you know, as we're sitting around here, it's kind of hard to believe that I'm sitting here, to be honest with you. You know, two, three years ago, I would have never, ever thought that I would be on the Board of Education. But, you know, I think it was clear that we needed to kind of, you know, I needed to get involved and I'm really happy to be a part of this team right now. I think we have an excellent team. I think the town council has an excellent team as well and I really hope to see all of us be able to work together with them and come up with some solutions for the problems that we may have ahead of us. But really quick, I just wanted to thank my wife, Shannon, my daughter, Rose, my campaign manager, my daughter, Nora, to the community who welcomed her when we knocked on their door. I mean, it was awesome because the door knocking, it gets a little nerve-wracking, but she really saw the best of Newington right then and there. And it was really great to see, you know, throughout the campaign, the campaign's hard work, but, you know, she didn't get to see any of, any of the negativity that might go on. She got to see people opening their doors, Republican, Democrat, unaffiliated, didn't matter, and wanting to discuss how we can make this town better. So, thank you to everybody who welcomed us. Thank you to Nancy and Jane who served this Board of Education with grace and just worked very hard. And I don't think honestly that I would be sitting here if I didn't get to watch them, especially for the last two years. So, thank you to them. Everybody else who encouraged me to run. One other thing really quick was just, I wanted to make note, congratulate the district on Veterans Day. I think there was some questions or concerns as to why we were going to have school on the observed holiday, but I think those questions and those doubts are gone now because you see the pictures, you see the kids with, you know, the flags and the veterans that came in. You just see, you know, my daughters came home and told me what they learned. And I think that's the first year of an amazing tradition that I really look forward to seeing. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branda. Mrs. Strohst?
Thank you. So, I didn't know that I was going to talk, so this may be the shortest and sweetest thing you ever hear out of my mouth this next two years. So, I just wanted to, it's true. So, I just wanted to thank everyone. I'm looking forward to being here. Like Mr. Branda said, in a million years, I never thought I'd be sitting here. So, it was in my passion for education that brought me here, so I am really looking forward to putting our kids first, making our town great and working with everyone. So, thank you for everyone for getting me here.
Thank you. Ms. Gion?
Okay. I have a couple, just a couple of things I want to say. Thank you to everybody that opened their door when I knocked on it these last couple of months. I appreciate everyone being willing to share their thoughts and ideas with me about where education should be going in this town. It was, it's always nice to hear from people firsthand what their thoughts and concerns are and their ideas for the future. So, thank you to everyone that took the time to talk. That was a highlight of the campaign. Campaigning is, takes a lot of time and energy and a lot of people, so there's a whole team of people working with us to get us here. So, thanks to everybody that helped. It's definitely a group effort. And when people ask me why I wanted to do this again, and when I see Lucas come up here and speak with such poise, and that's why. Because we have kids like that in our schools and, you know, you want, I want more kids like that coming out of our schools. So, Lucas, I appreciate you being such a great role model. My kids were here watching, so I hope that they took some notes for going forward. But, you know, it's for all of our kids in Newington is why I'm here and I'm grateful to have this opportunity to continue with this. And thank you, Josh. I think you're going to be a great chairperson and I appreciate the opportunity to be the vice chair, so thank you.
Thank you. Before my remarks, Dr. Collins has a 30-second explanation of board packets in general.
I am so sorry, I forgot to mention this beginning. The green folder has to stay here. That is what Sophie uses for, for the boards' packets. So, we will give it to you electronically or we will deliver it to your home, whichever you like. The other one, you're free, please feel free to take whatever out of it, but we'd like you to leave the other folder behind so we can put more stuff in there for you. You'll be getting a lot of things at the upcoming board retreat where you will set your goals and get a lot of information. So, I wanted to just remind you to leave that stuff here.
Thank you. For my remarks, I'd like to start by congratulating everyone on sitting around the board. Again, for most of you, and congratulations to Danielle and Mike for joining us. I wanted to share a moment of my vision for the board. This is a talented group of people and we were a talented group of people for the last two years. And Danielle and Mike, you're going to fit perfectly in with us. Your backgrounds, your resumes, your passion are perfect for what we do around this table. We come from a diverse group of professions, ages, interests, hobbies, and we have had some amazing discussions over the six years that I've been on the board. My hope, and I hope that you'll see that reflected through the next two years, is that each of us is going to be taking ownership over part of the board and feel like it's ours to move forward. That it's not my role as chair to lead the board or run the board, that it's not Sharon's as secretary or Emily's as vice chair. We are sitting up here and we have titles along with names, but each one of us is going to be an invaluable member of the team that moves forward the Newington Public Schools. To that end, based on feedback from almost all of us, I set aside committee assignments that I'll hand out at the end of the evening for everyone to look at. I think that you'll see that it reflects people taking ownership of many different parts of the board. People will be leading this board all throughout committees, which, as I said earlier, is by far the most important part of how the board operates and how the board moves things forward. And I hope they all look at it. If anyone has any major issues with it, obviously give me a call, shoot me an email and we can address that at any time. The appointment of the committees is, in my opinion, pro forma because all are invited to the committees. If anyone shows up at a committee, you'll be welcome to take part in discussing the action. There's very little official voting that goes on that you have to be a member of that committee to do. So, I welcome everyone to take ownership over as much as you can. I look forward to having very good, in-depth discussions around this table as well. As those of you who were on the board when I was the chair in Mark Stead for several meetings, when he was traveling during his last year on the board, I like discussion, I like hearing points of view, I think it's important for the public. And I think it's important for all of us to get out what we need to get out, when we need to get it out. That is a helpful thing. It has been a great thing. It's been impressive the six years I've been on the board, how many different angles people can go to. My challenge to all of you is to know what you want to say before you're sitting down at the table and to discuss it, if you can, with myself, with other board members, flesh out your ideas so we can have an even stronger, in-depth conversation about the issues. I think that we have that in us and I think that this experience of the board with seven returning members is going to be one of our strengths. I would also just like to point out, as is tradition, we are sitting in mixed-party form. I like, I like to consider this board not as bipartisan but as nonpartisan for 99.9% of things. That's been my experience on the board. We are all just here to represent the children and I hope everyone feels that as they sit around the table. And Mr. Sylvia, I will take you up on your offer to help me with many different things throughout the next two years and I'll certainly be in touch about some things that I think that you will be helpful leading the board forward on and I appreciate your comments. I do want to thank the town council for their words about working together over the next two years. I'm very comfortable with the makeup of the council, that it's a strong group of people as well, seven returners there as well. They will be a good group to work with. I look forward to it, having open lines of communication as we've started to have over the last two years. I want to thank Nancy for her hundreds and hundreds of hours over the last two years and thousands upon thousands for 10 years. The students in Newington are better off for it. Thank you. Please thank your husband and your kids for sharing you for so many years. We will sorely miss you around the table, but I am grateful that at any time when I call, you will certainly pick up the phone, which is also the same message that Dr. Finkelstein sent me earlier this week. And it's, it's an honor to be sitting in the seat that he sat in and Nancy after him and I hope to make everyone proud of the work that we do on the board. I do want to thank my parents, who are obviously out tonight, for all of their help and support over the last number of years. And I want to thank my wife as well for her support and for not coming up here to thank the rest of you for taking me away so that she can get more studying done. Thank you to everyone. I wish everyone a good evening. The work in earnest begins now. We have our board retreat coming up soon, so please take a look at the board priorities from 15 to 17 and jot down any notes you have about what kind of shift you want to make, if any, in the direction of the board. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. By Mr. Vassella, second by Ms. Gion. And we are adjourned at 9:36 PM.